Call to handle the county council meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda, Madam Auditor, if you will have a roll call, please.
Brad Beaver?
Here.
Fred Glenn?
Present.
Amy Moxelomani?
Present.
Steve Schwartz?
Present.
Ken Alexander?
Present.
Sue Mackey?
Here.
Steve Nation?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. This time, if you will all rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Council Mackey.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon our community. We ask that you be with us here tonight as we make decisions for the good of our county. We ask that you be with elected officials here in Hamilton County and throughout the nation in this upcoming election. We ask that you be with all of us, our families, and those of us who are going through some trying times. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on your agenda tonight is the public hearing referencing an ordinance CC 1005-2022-B, an ordinance in Hamilton County, Indiana appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bonds of 2020 to B. And at this time, I would open the public hearing and would listen to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment concerning this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Real quick about this, just an update on where we are with the VOT process. The county received the RFI proposals last Friday. The council will have two members on the review committee, so we'd ask that we decide amongst ourselves who will be reviewing the RFIs and then eventually interviewing the proposals, proposers. And at that point, after the interviews have concluded, we'll put together RFP and issue that, and there'll be another committee for that as well. So if you all do not mind thinking about who you'd like to be on this committee, let me know by Monday, so we can start getting that process started. If you do have any other questions, we do have Heather Fain from Ice Mud Bond Counsel, Lynn and Fay from Behr is our underwriter, and Oscar Gutierrez from Bondry is our municipal advisor. But if there are any questions, thank you, and we'll keep it going forward.
Hearing none, thank you, Connor. And at this time, item five. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to close the public hearing at this time. Now we will move on to item five. We will need to read and approve the minutes. If everybody's done so, I would entertain a motion for the final budget adoption, 10/17/2022, 2023.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, public comments. We have an individual here from Indy Warrior Partnership, Mr. Matt Hall. Welcome this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I do have a presentation just on a second to hold up. And I believe you all were given pre-reads. Well, again, I want to thank you very much for inviting me out or having me out to speak tonight a little bit about Indy Warrior Partnership. My name's Matt Hall. I am the program lead for Indy Warrior Partnership. It's a partnership, it's a collaboration of veterans organizations and veterans in the central Indiana area. A catchment area is Marion County and the surrounding vigorous counties as well. I have about seven slides to get through in five minutes, so please forgive me if I'm brief and kind of hustle through these. But I do live in Hamilton County, I am a resident, and I am a veteran, and I have been doing this for a little bit of time. So Indy Warrior Partnership uses a community integration model from America's Warrior Partnership as a whole. We are a program of America's Warrior Partnership. Our goal is to improve the quality of life for veterans in your community. It's a large swing at Indy veteran suicide as a whole. We believe that if we get to know the veteran population and get to understand their needs and wants, that we can better assist them when they do end up in those situations, those times of crisis. We all know that post-traumatic stress is not just a veteran-only situation or an issue. Any kind of trauma can initiate that kind of thing. But to help our veterans, we want to get to know them before that trauma really sets into them, so that they know that they have people that are out there that can help and connect them to resources. On the screen here in your reading heads, you can see a diagram here that kind of depicts veterans as a whole. You use the bell curve. And on your left, you can see some of the veterans that are in a little more crisis, homelessness, unemployment. And those are the veterans that receive this great care from a lot of our organizations already created and already running in Hamilton County and in the central Indiana area. And that's fantastic, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to connect with that other eighty to ninety percent in the middle before they end up in that crisis. So we want to connect with these veterans to have them and to create a community so they understand that there is, that there are options for them. So what we use is a, we call it a holistic wheel. And at the center of this wheel is quality of life. And that's kind of what we're trying to bring, is a quality of life to these veterans to lift them up, to help them as they run into, as they run into life's everyday issues. Everything from figuring out carpool for their kids to looking forward to get a better career or move from a job to a career. The four ways we're going to, we use to do this is our four-step plan. We connect. So we connect with not just veterans, but we also connect with their family members and partners, as well as community members and people in the community. We educate the veterans and those community members with resources about veteran needs. We educate those veterans about the different resources that your community has for them. We advocate for the veterans and their family members, so part of our thing is we want to create a relationship with the county council so that we can find out what your veterans in your community want, what they're needing, what they're lacking, and come back to and present to you on a regular basis as to what you're seeing amongst our veterans. I know we want to collaborate. We want to collaborate with you, we want to collaborate with resources, we want to collaborate with business owners, as well as veterans and their family members, so that we can understand better their needs and wants. Just another way to show the holistic wheel and the four-step plan, but ultimately, our goal is to strengthen that collaboration between the community members and the veterans. So here's the so what, right? It's, if I didn't say it, I was probably going to get asked it. The so what is, we are looking to create a partnership with the Hamilton County Council and the residents of Hamilton County. We are in the process of creating door claims for your businesses that say, "In partnership with Hamilton County Council and the Indy Warrior Partnership, this business proudly supports all veterans and service members that serve our country." There's a QR code on that door claim that people can log into and find the website, log into our program, and then we have a case coordinator that calls them instead of doing everything through email, actually calls, has a conversation, initiates that contact to create that community. The so what is, we would like a memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Hamilton County Council so that I can put your logo on these to show that we are working together to help our veterans in your community. With that, I think I have ten seconds.
So when you say the county council logo, do you mean the county logo?
Yes.
Okay.
Or a logo of, I mean, I'm open to suggest if you have a veteran logo, if you have a more specific logo for veterans, for veterans, we could use that as well.
I think from my perspective, I mean, I think we've been, we will continue to be very supportive in funding positions with, like, the Veteran Service Officer, that is not a required thing, but we do that because of our dedication to the veterans and our community, that we continue to support those. So I don't think that you're going to find anyone that's against that, but I kind of want to make sure that we're getting you to the right people that can help make that happen. And I think that going through the VSO and the commissioners might be the right spot.
And if I recall, I know it's going to escape me because it's been a while now, I know that there was a subcommittee around veterans with either, oh, I can't remember, it was tourism, economic development, it was one of the, and Mike's shaking his head yes. And so have you had any conversations, has there been anybody else that you've had this presentation to?
Yes, so I couldn't work with Mike for some time. I'm also a member of the Hamilton County, I have to read this.
The coalition.
Hamilton County Coalition on Prevention of Suicide for Service Members, Veterans, and Their Families. They shortened it to Stronger Veterans, Stronger Communities. We're also a part of the Governor's Challenge, Priority Groups One and Two, Identifying Service Members and Their Families, as well as Promoting Connectivity.
Have you given this presentation to the commissioners as well?
No, ma'am. So you are my Guinea face, and after this starts the Travel and Road Show.
Hey, I just want to say how, I mean, he knows who to go to first, so.
This is my back, so.
Mark's in the background.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, moving on on our agenda, item seven, it's the committee and officer reports. First up, President, I have nothing. Vice President?
I have nothing.
Highway?
We met, and there's items on the agenda coming up.
And finance.
No meeting.
Personnel?
We didn't have a poll for tomorrow's election.
I don't think we had a poll or a meeting. And then we'll move on to miscellaneous. Do they have anything for miscellaneous? Seeing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Seeing none, we're at item nine here, it's tabled business.
So with that, I know we'll have to, well, the thing is, is we'll have to remove it by the end of the year if it's not approved. I know ARPA appropriated it, so I guess that we can leave it tabled until we go through the practice of untabling and.
Yeah.
Okay, we will leave that issue tabled. Moving on to item ten, new business. Approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven, it's additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. At this time, I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. And the first one is a clerk transfer for $415.16.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And item two is community corrections. There's three items there, A, B, and C. The first one is a transfer of $11,000.
I would motion to combine all three.
And aye. Okay, yes, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve all three.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the next item on your agenda is a corner transfer of $4,500.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is court administration. There's a 144 amendment for 2023.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's an ISS additional for $83,106.63.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
This is for the OPTA licensing and authentication.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, emergency management transfer for $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item seven is the sheriff. There's two here, A and a B. It's a 144 amendment for 2022.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. B from the sheriff is a transfer of $171,000.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to probation. There's a 144 amendment for 2023, or, I'm sorry, 2022.
Motion to combine A and B for probation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fund 1,023, Hamilton County, I'm sorry, HCAA operating requesting $215.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that was the Hamilton County Airport Authority. Okay, item C, it's Fund 1,053, solid waste.
So moved.
Second.
Both that one, this one and the one before, the fund deferred comp.
Yep.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is the Hamilton County Visitor Convention Bureau. They're requesting $700,000.
So moved.
Second.
I know they're going to ask, so it's a big number. So this is, if you remember, we had a $1.7 million bond that was paid off, the county paid off a million dollars of it and left 700,000 left. This is pulling from the additional monies that they received through the hotel tax that they could then bring in and pay the remaining part of that.
So that bond goes away?
The bond is already away, but this pays off the debt.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next item is Fund 1138, it's a transfer for $200,000. That is from the highway department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So you'll see this, it's kind of moving from one bridge to another one. It's, this had to do with a bridge that was not going to get done this year, and they're going to do two other culverts, 196 in Finley and 161 in Crookendale.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F on your agenda, it is Fund 1140, courthouse for transfer of $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is end-of-year needs.
Okay, item G, it's Fund 1159, health requesting $713,600.
So moved for discussion.
Second.
That Ken Alexander's on the roll, didn't you, Brad?
I know. His nature way too much.
It's only when it gets to big dollars, right, Brad?
They call you.
So. I think we can tell who's the easy touch.
Yeah, so this one, if you'll remember, this was brought for. Yeah, so this one, if you'll remember, this was brought forward before. They wanted to utilize some of the monies that they got from a, money was reimbursed after COVID, and they wanted to use this money to do some of the work in and around the health department.
Do you already have a motion?
We did.
And a second?
Yes.
Insurance reimbursement?
The government reimbursed our, we were paying out the insurance and the government reimbursed that money.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to page two on your agenda. There's a lot of requests here for additionals and transfer. It's item H on your agenda. It's Fund 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway. They are requesting $1,054,345.
Huh?
It was many different things.
There's many different things below. And the first one is the additional for $570,000.
So all those together equal a million five four?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two on those additionals, $37,000, or $39,708.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Do we need discussion?
If anyone wants, like, we have, if you want an explanation for it, this was just utilizing it to deal with, I think it was some unsuitable soils and other materials there.
Beet bog.
Yeah.
Beet bog is exactly right.
Hmm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item three. It's $186,802.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next one, number four, it's an additional for $257,835.
Seven.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Brad, did you have a question on that?
US 31 to Hazeldale.
The resurfacing.
So this is a transfer from federal aid job savings, so it's kind of, it's a reappropriation of dollars that were already in another project that were being pulled over. So it's a resurfacing 31 to Hazeldale.
Okay.
And yes, it will happen probably near the same time that some of Allisonville and 3146 will be close to. So just love to where you think about it.
46th Street.
Okay, the next one, number five, is a transfer for $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number six is a transfer for $10,000.
So moved. Second.
So just a while to get the second one there. Just real quick. You'll have noticed that one and five and four and six are on the same roads. And it's because they're just pulling money from different groups and putting it together. So they're kind of together to pay for the improvements that we're talking about in those two areas.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last one is number seven. It's a transfer for $250,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Is the resurfacing contract, is funding, funding up?
Is Riverwood Avenue in that list?
I don't have the list in front of you. I'm sure that Brad Davis could find out and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item I, it's Fund 1222. There's a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have you guys met Mr. Hubs?
No.
I know, I just, we're waving. I thought maybe we should.
This is a great opportunity.
Yes. Mr. Hubs, are you in the audience here?
Yes, he is.
He is.
I really liked Jeff Shimmer. He's a really good dude.
And he kept his speeches to 20 minutes, so if you could do the same, welcome.
Thank you. Mike Hubs, the Director of Communications, so six weeks in into the job, and I want you all to know that you have a second to none on your dispatchers. So thank you for your support. We're going to be expanding in 2023. And I really look forward to working with all of you. But keep in mind, there's nothing more important in this county than those dispatchers that sit in there when we put our heads to bed tonight and answer those calls that need to be answered. So I look forward to meeting you all, and thank you for the opportunity and approving that tonight.
Thank you.
And he has a background, so if you haven't had the chance to meet with him yet, get on his calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Back to the highway. Fund 4907-0703, it's a highway special transfer.
4905 Ortho Photography.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back up here. Okay, Fund 4905, it's Digital Ortho Photography. They're requesting $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that's just an annual subscription, right?
Correct.
Okay, now we're on to Fund 4907-0703. It's the highway special transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Again, this is for 146 feet resurfacing US 31 to Hazeldale.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to L on your agenda, it's Fund 4918. It's the youth assistance, and there's some 144 amendments for 2022 and 2023.
Did we need to get both? Did we get both of those?
They're listed together, so do they need to be combined, or because they're listed, can they be voted on as?
Did we, I love to collect my motion. Was it, was 4907 didn't go into it, it said miscellaneous projects, I think it covers it, right?
On the 4907, yes, but on 4918, I apologize, I would have moved ahead. I'm thinking you were asking about the 22 and 23, that you're talking about the two together.
Yeah.
I think based on the fact that there were two as transfers, they were done.
Together. Sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and another discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item on your agenda, it's a grant appropriation. There's reductions and transfers.
Can we, I'd like motion to combine M?
One quick second. We did not have, when the 2022 and 2023 mentioned for youth assistance, there was not a motion and a second. It was just a question on whether or not they needed to be combined. They did not. So I will make the motion to approve, and I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to M. Thank you for that correct.
No problem.
Motion to approve grant appropriations M1 through 11?
So moved. I'm sorry, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was, that's good.
So we need a motion to.
Motion to approve grant appropriations M1 through 11?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. If you get to the last page here, it's N. There's some amended agenda items. And there are four of them.
Do you motion to approve the first for court administration, 2023?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two is the prosecutor's 2023 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three is from the sheriff. It's a 2023 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last one, Fund 8950. It's an ARPA transfer.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
What's in it? Am I missing that sheet?
Yes, you are.
And I am as well.
What was the discussion?
Oh, it was emailed?
Ah.
I got it.
I haven't.
Are you looking for an explanation?
No, I just want to know which ones were part of it, because you get the list and.
Yeah, we're giving $2 million to Westfield for some higher education initiatives. How we transferred it instead of just making a general appropriation? I don't really know, and I was there at the meeting.
So as far as the, it appears, based on the documents.
Everybody's got the documents.
Right, so if everybody's comfortable then with the requests that are.
Are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable. I went through the documents.
Okay, I was at the meeting.
I know, so you should be comfortable too.
Well, as comfortable as I can be. The ARPA thing is wearing down.
As soon as you get rid of it.
It's almost done with.
It's getting kinky.
Heroin.
Okay.
Inflation money.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 12, it's announcements. Sheriff?
Just a couple things I wanted to make you aware of. Our community foundation just had our heroes run this past weekend. We had over 300 participants. We brought in just over 30,000, netted about 23 for our foundation. And so that's going to support the foundation and the things we do, like back-to-school shopping. We have the Christmas shopping event coming up here pretty soon. So we're going to have kids in Hamilton County that are going to have Christmas that normally wouldn't. So it's just awesome to be a part of the sheriff's office, the community foundation, just, you know, keeping Hamilton County safe and giving back to the community. So that's great. And we just had a bunch of volunteers there. We had probably close to 70 volunteers there. So it's just amazing how the community comes together there. And then just one thing I thought I'd share with you. Judge Najjar, Jill Ackland, Captain Bowen, and myself, we've been participating in a National Sheriff's Association and Indiana Supreme Court-sponsored court security training. And so they brought five counties together, kind of as the pilot, if you will. And so we've been talking about our court security plan, which is required by, each county is required to have one, and ours is the gold standard, and I think that comes because of the funding that you guys routinely provide for us to have the resources we need for that. So I just thought I would share that with you, so thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations for all the efforts that you guys do.
Are we, are we going to go through the attorneys?
Counsel attorney?
Nothing at all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. And madam auditor?
I have nothing.
At this time, I will adjourn the Hamilton County Council meeting.
Reminder, we have a work session next month, right?
What's it about?
You're shaking your head.
It's not a work session. Well, you have a work session. I'm going to be calling probably a.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I'm wrong. I'm wrong. That's my mistake.
We are having a work session too, right after the caucus.
We're going to have a work session, so yeah.
That is correct, okay.
Okay, and at this time, I will adjourn our county council meeting.